We are here today with Ronald Tracy Robison, who is running for city council district eight. Hello Ronald, thank you so much for joining us. Looking forward to sharing this space with you. How are you doing on this hot day?
I'm good. I'm at work in air conditioned environment. So thank God for that. I escaped this this heat. I understand we're melanated people and we want the uh to be sun kissed and all that type of stuff. There's a limit, man. There's a limit and I'm only so dark. So yeah.
Yeah, it's a hot day. So we're gonna jump right into it. So let's start. Who is Ronald Tracy Robison?
Ronald Tracy Robinson. I am uh I was born January 13th, 1991 and I think about 7:07 PM at Baptist Hospital. I am a Capricorn. Uh let's see, I was um I was born in Sherwood, 4829 Foxborough Road. Where I was born and then I moved a little further north into the uh north side of McDonald Avenue. When I was about 12, 13 years old. I went to Rutherford Pearson Elementary. Uh when I was young and then I went to Highlands Middle School. I graduated from there in 2005 before they turned to a magnet school the following year. Then I went to First Coast High School, graduated from there in 2009. And uh after that, I've been working hard, working hard. Then you know, pretty much when I left high school, I um sort of getting into just knowledge of self. Um educating myself on the school of topics pertaining to not only spiritual. Um overstanding of who I am, but also socially and politically. And um I pretty much delve myself deeper into that and getting out here in these uh in my neighborhood and getting like a lot familiar with the the environment around me as far as activism is concerned and what my um what my neighbors needed from me, you know, started feeding the poor, uh doing food drives, uh mentoring the youth. Um tutoring, having no um self talk, not self taught, but independent learning facilities for children to learn different things and things they they should pick up, but they weren't picking up from their schools that they were failing. I guess, which is math, science, reading, writing, arithmetic, things of that nature. And uh I was doing that for a long time and then I moved to right across from Edel Waters College at that time, it was EWC. And uh I was getting involved in the political sphere, not directly involved, but kind of seeing how that process worked. You know, because of uh Sekou Diallo, he was one of those guys that kind of sparked the brain about um how to get involved in your community and what you can do and the possibilities of what you can do in the as a local candidate in that sphere. So well, I always give him a shout out for that. And yeah, so that's pretty much why I am as Ronald Tracy Robinson. I feel like the other answers I'm gonna give is gonna compromise the entire interview because I don't wanna say the say multiple things, you know. I don't wanna feed myself, so I'm gonna I'm gonna save that.
So pretty much you pretty much answer what inspired you to run for city council. What really inspired you to run for the city council, district eight?
Mm hmm. Really inspired me to run for city council. Before I said, you know, once I started getting familiar with the political process. Because prior to that, I didn't even know who or what city council office buzz or what that entailed to during that time. Because it was it was at a very local level and I'm focused on things in Washington DC, the stuff that I had no effect on. And um and learning about the powers of what I could do uh in my own backyard, that was one thing. Now what inspired me to be a candidate and go ahead and take the reins and run was the fact that I seen so much government intrusion during the uh 2020 when pandemic was really uh really prevalent. Really doing his thing. Um for me, the pandemic was the government legislation that intruded and our neighborhoods and our areas that put us in a worse place than we were prior to the pandemic. And I believe they used that as a front to further disenfranchises as a people, especially in district eight. And what examples can I give? Well, in September 2020, they uh brought in the CDC moratorium. Where people who owned homes, who were landlords, who were providing room and board for people to live in their house, which is a private contract between those two people. There's no third party required. The government ended up um making the courts as a as a screening process for who they could evict. Who they get can get out of their houses. Now, the other side of that coin, as far as the one that's renting this space. He's in a really precarious position because they just fired him from his job. They just think his job is non essential. So there's a there's like maybe the first time in history of Jacksonville where people were told that it couldn't work because they felt like their contribution wasn't essential to the overall economy, which is foolish. Something as petty as you wiping down the windows at the stop sign, you know, on cars and then something as sophisticated as being an engineer. It's all essential because you gotta feed your family one way or another. Make an honest living for yourself. Anything to keep you from breaking in someone's home, like my grandmother. Her uh her house end up getting broken into once they started implementing the CDC moratorium. Because a lot of landlords, because they couldn't fire anybody, not fire, but let anybody go, they end up foreclosing on their house. And getting it uh sent uh sent over to the banks, JP Morgan Chase, Merrill Lynch, Wells Fargo, all this type of stuff. And they end up making trillions of dollars in revenue. They didn't make any net profit. They just made a lot of money and revenue from the debt that was passed from one place into the next. And when they pass out the stimulus checks, the people end up taking them stimulus checks not to just hedge their selves and their savings against an economy they've never seen before or experienced before. They've uh put it into a lot of the credit that they had to cure because of the fact they didn't have a job anymore. Or people wasn't paying on the rent, so they got to pay their mortgage through, you know, through uh back pay on this type of stuff. And it was just one way for the government to give fake money and pretty much launder it by way of us to keep banks alive, to keep these big corporations alive. Is that model of too big to fail that I've seen with my own eyes and people who were struggling, who owned homes, who were providing that service to people who needed a house. Um who are realtors and who was in real estate, they end up losing a lot. And um it put people in a very desperate situation where you don't have any private property. You don't have any uh private property rights. You have any private property rights. That's that one asset of wealth that is taken from them. They could have passed from generation to generation. Not only that, the people that had their homes taken away from them by the by the banks. Because of lockdown procedures, they also lost their stores. A lot of the mom and pop shops were shut down. About 130 small businesses were taken away in Jacksonville during that time. Um it was mainly restaurants and uh retail. A lot of those were shut down. Which is really strange because after all this past, the government ended up saying, okay, we're gonna use the SBA. The Small Business Association and we're gonna fund a lot of government money, a lot of federal dollars pumping into the economy in order to uh sign up new businesses and prop them up. They wanted to sign about 200 of them. But my problem is the government can't be people's salvation and their damnation at the same time. You can't say I'm gonna shut down your businesses and then on the same token, I'm gonna help you um bring it back up. Because that's enough, that's pretty much more debt that they gotta try to pay for before they can even make revenue back. Before they can break even, before they can make a profit. It's always propped up by a bunch of debt. And they're engineering a fake um generic economy from that. And um they're doing this with the gas tax that was implemented um at this, at the beginning of this year, January 2022. Out of the $1 billion are taken from us from a 25 to 30 year period from our tax money. They're gonna put it into that among the 70 other infrastructure projects that we never asked for.
Thank you. So let's get on to the next one. What is the role of city council? Uh what would you do? What department would you oversee and what are your obligations to Florida? If you need me to repeat any of that, I will.
No, that's fine because I read uh some of the questions before I came on, so I kind of got myself familiar with it. And um as far as what the city council does, from my understanding, it handles a lot of the the funding where the money goes in the city. Um the mayor proposes a budget and then we work out that budget, see if we know and we put up a vote to see, yeah, your name, if we approve of this or not. What I'm gonna be doing as a city council person is I hope to work in the department where we can decentralize public works. Because for example, um remember that time we didn't have any recycling for about six months. Remember that?
Yes, I remember.
Oh yeah, we didn't have recycling for about six months, but yet we were still paying tax dollars for a service that we weren't even getting. And I don't know where they're from, but if you are still paying someone to fix a roof on your house and you're still getting rained on. I mean, I don't I don't expect, I don't, there's no reason you should be paying them. They're not doing the work that you hired them to do. If they're gonna be acting as if they're omnipresent beings walking around like like booting spaghetti monsters. They can see everything and hear everything and they should they should go ahead and make up that promise they should make do. If they're gonna provide provide everybody with recycling, then the money that we're giving them should be justified. But it's not because if we're all getting paid for a service by way of taxation and only half or maybe less than half of the people are getting the service actually, then it's theft. Then it's um highway robbery, it's grand theft. And also they also took um 142,000 dollars of our tax money to put in those 15 different trash sites. Instead of getting it right the first time, which is a negotiate contracts with other independent people that can get the recycling into Jacksonville or specifically in district eight where it matters for me, you know, to go and get the recycling back. So the people can not pay money for their neighborhoods to look like trash. That's what we ended up doing. We ended up paying our tax money and all this money for us to look like a slum village. And um it's already um dilapidating the property value. It's already uh we're already going through a housing crisis. We didn't need to go through a recycling crisis on top of that. Because what I did, I ended up looking for an independent recycling company called Recyclops. I'm very uh familiar with the CEO of that company, you know, he's a good man. I speak to him often. And um during that time, I was caving for their company the whole time. And what they wanted was enough signatures for Jacksonville, specifically people in district eight to go and sign up for their services. Same amount of money that we would pay for our taxes going into recycling to the city. We would give it to them and they would do um either monthly, weekly, whatever you want. And depending on what you subscribe to, that's what you're gonna get. It's kind of like an Uber based service. You can now provide employment for very young people or people of all ages. You'd had a if you had a four door sedan or if you had a big pickup truck, it would pay you based off of how useful your your car was gonna be. Just like an Uber, you get like a little car, whatever, you get some money, but you got like a um a limousine car, they're gonna pay you big dollars. And um same thing worked with the Cyclops model. And then uh go and pick up all the uh places that want the service that subscribe, you're given a route. And then once you pick up all the trash, uh they take you to an aggregate zone and you can go in and dispose of it there. Um and now the thing about it is, once Mayor Curry said that in April, he was going to bring back recycling. That's where it kind of caused a rift because he's a good guy. He didn't wanna step on anybody's toes as far as the city ordinance is concerned. And I said, okay, I understand that. But he did say, you know, as soon as you get into city council, you know, then we can talk. And I can go ahead and come back in there. And I said, all right, cool, I'll go ahead and do that for you, you know? And um so that's what I wanna do as a city councilman is to provide opportunities in the market to provide for the people that that vote with their dollar basically, that go ahead and say, hey, I want your service and I'm gonna subscribe to you out of my free will for voluntary means and you can go ahead and work for me, you know, I mean, we can build a beneficial relationship. The problem with um what I've seen with the city council, the city in general, is they treated us like pretty much garbage. Because they knew we couldn't go anywhere else for the recycling or for the service. That's how they could treat us any way they wanted to. Because there's no incentive, there's no competition. Anytime you have competition within the market, you get the best deals. Buy one, get one free clearance, you know, buy one, get 50% off, whatever the case may be. Because they have to compete for your dollar. They got they gotta compete for your goodwill. And once that happened, they pretty much lost my goodwill. And then um, you know, that's what I wanted to go ahead and offer. And once they once they brought it back in April, they took away glass pickup. They took away glass pickup and there were more regulations on top of that, which you're paying for as well. And uh Cyclops still, they still pick up glass and they still provide the service that you need to get your trash and your recycling disposed of. Pretty much paying the same uh the same rate. So what I'm gonna do is get in there, have competing factors going. It's like, hey, you wanna have the city, you know, pretty much do what they did before. And whenever they go through their own personal problems, have you be affected by it? Or have an independent company who's not beholden to those bureaucrats, who's not beholden to legislation and legislative process. You gotta sit there for a while. You gotta have a whole town hall meeting or city council meeting and pretty much let you vent for three minutes about a decision they've already made for you. It's not like your opinion is gonna change anything, you know? Because of course, they're paid for by somebody else. We didn't think, because from their eyes, we didn't put them in, so they don't have to answer to us. There's always powers that be that put them in there that they have to answer to and it's not us. And uh on a side note, some companies, you know, during my campaign have come and asked me to sponsor them in any way, shape or form. They were gonna give me some money, you know, to help with my campaign. And but I was like, look, man, if I'm gonna be doing that, taking your money, then what you're gonna be, what you're gonna do. Because I can already see it. This happens all the time. This is how the game is played. I'm gonna get in that seat. And you're gonna want me to, in order to pay off that debt, want me to tax the people, tax you pretty much, want me to want me to tax you and the people in district eight for their tax incentives in order for you to be happy and then hopefully I can skim off the top. But that's not how I do things. I can, what I can do is remove the obstacles from your path in order for you to be prosperous and build a foundation for yourself. But I'm not gonna do it um by stealing from other people's pockets.
Great, great, great. So how can you help voters in a way that other running, running for office cannot?
I give you specific, I give you facts, data and statistics and what's happening specifically and I can let people know how they can from their homes um cure it, how they can bring it into effect. I'm not gonna act as if the city council is just some kind of office. That's just, like I said, this loading spaghetti monster that can cure everything. It's omnipresent being that knows everything. Nobody knows how to do what in their community better than the people that live in the community. And once I'm elected into city council, I said, once, not if, once I'm elected into city council. It's gonna be the people that elected me, who I'm gonna be representing, who I'm gonna be speaking for. It's not gonna be the other way around. I go there countless times. I go there and I speak. They're not even looking at me. They behind the glass or whatever. They probably playing solitaire or something. I don't know what they doing, but they ain't hearing whatever I have to say. And um maybe if you say something that'll spark a nerve, then they'll meet with you, you know, after the processions are over or whatever. And they'll they'll talk to you and they'll say, hey, speed my assistant over here, maybe we can connect on something. And then they just pretty much leave hanging and then they ghost from your life. So I said, you know what, how about I go ahead and just do this myself? Because it's ridiculous and yeah, yeah, it's really, it's really bad and I'm tired of them getting a pay raise while I'm getting a pay cut. Um within the budget of the um that was passed by Mayor Curry, it's like a billion dollars in the budget, maybe 1.4 billion dollars um um at max. It's 80 million dollars more than it was previously in the um in the previous budgeting cycle. And a lot of them, a lot of members, you know, a lot of select members end up getting a nice hefty raise uh from that. And I'm sitting here like, okay, you're gonna put in the gas tax. Like I said before, we're gonna be taking $1 billion from the people of Jacksonville. You appropriate our money for big corporations such as um by way of the Downtown Investment Authority. Um the Homes to Suites Hotel, for example, they wanna build another one in Park Street. So they ended up saying, we're gonna take $3 million um dollars from people without their knowledge or consent to build another hotel. Even though they are an independent chain that can fund their way into expansion. If the people want you to expand, then use their money to do it. That's why I say they, we vote with our dollar. If we don't want you, we don't want you. But if we do, we'll go ahead and pay you to be there. Even the CEO of the company, Lori Boyer of the Downtown Investment Authority, she said, you know, we really don't need their money. You know, it's not, it's not necessary for the uh for the tax break. But they were very adamant in the proceedings and they end up saying, okay, well, I'm gonna take away 3 million and go ahead and just do it anyway. And another one is a company called Central. They are an electric vehicle company. Electric vehicles for uh pickup trucks, 18 wheeler, stuff like that. Sounds from what I what I read in the article in a logistics sense, that's what they provide electric vehicles for. And they end up taking about, I believe about 400,000 um of tax payers' money in order to fund that. And this is an example of what we call crony capitalism, or what I call just cronyism, because it's not capitalism if it's not off of the free will of the people. Because what people don't understand is capitalism is a great engine that has ever been made in human history. Because from previous times, things came from plunder and theft. You had the British mercantile system. You have communism. You have socialism. You have all these systems that seize the means of production in some way, shape or form to um for the benefit of the few at the expense of the many. But with capitalism, we have a metric of what benefits human behavior that propels the overall welfare of humanity. You know, for example, what do you do when Netflix doesn't show you that movie that you want to see? You unsubscribe because the market doesn't want that, you know? You have ESPN subscription, Netflix, Hulu, Disney Plus and all these type of things. These are from voluntary contribution and subscription. You're not taxed for Disney Plus. You're not taxed for Netflix. You're not taxed for any of these things. So why should it be any different um in the market, in the wider market in Jacksonville, Florida? Specifically in district eight, you know, and then that that's one of the, just one of the things that I'm running on in my campaign is to abolish the uh the gas tax that was implemented in January 2022. We gotta get that off because we can be $1 billion richer. They wanna, of course, they wanna sell you the the uh the septic tanks. Okay, we're gonna get rid of the septic tanks. About time, you know, it's been about 55 years since the consolidation in 1968. So we're gonna get the get the doggone uh septic tanks with the billion dollars we're gonna be taking from you. Hope you don't mind, you know? And I'm like, look, man, if you let the free market dictate what it's gonna do with the money that it has, we could have then gotten rid of the septic tanks. Septic tank is good, it should not be this big of an issue. It could have gotten done years ago. We end up taking our money and plunging us deeper into um impoverished conditions because you're not giving us a chance to even raise money. We already have inflation kicking our behind. We already have a recession that's coming and kicking our behind. This is something else that we just didn't need. If you just let us decide what to do with our money for our own personal lives, you mean to tell me they know do my money better than me? I don't think so. I don't think so. That's what, that's what, that's what I thought. And I'm tired of them putting in these uh these referendums. And having all these proceedings without the knowledge of the people in Jacksonville about what they wanna do with their capital. We already got a capital gains tax. We already got a sales tax. We already have a property tax, which segues nicely into the second tenant that I'm running on. It's about the property taxes. There's a referendum being written for us to vote on in August 23rd about raising up the property taxes in order to pay for um public schools, specifically for teachers' salary. My problem is this. My sister, she homeschools her children. She tailor makes her education for her children. And you know, her family, they have a house that they're that they're uh paying on. They have a whole family. She doesn't, they don't go to public school. And the and the thing about it, not only does she have to pay the mortgage, not only does she provide for her children, not only does she gotta get food and all this other type of stuff. Not only does she gotta get the resources to educate her children, but she also has to pay for tuition from her property taxes for a child that's not even hers. They say, you know, oh, it takes a village to raise a child, but that ain't, that ain't my village. I'm sorry, that's not my village. I don't, I don't, I don't do that. I don't, I don't do that. If if my, I don't even have children and I'm paying property taxes for other kids' education. Just so they can get in student debt, just so they don't, they're gonna have 52% of reading comprehension. Uh according to uh Florida Florida data as far as public schools are concerned. That's a low percentage for my for my dad. And public teachers are get are paid 40 times higher than private school teachers, but yet private schools have a higher um graduation rate. They have a higher success rate, which breaks the myth that if you want something to succeed, you want something to prosper. You gotta just throw money at it. Just throw money at it and maybe something will happen. It's not gonna happen that way. You know, it's not how, it's not how it is. And it's another example of socialism. Even if you don't go to the school, even if you don't have any children, even if you retired, even if you pay the mortgage on your house. You're gonna have to pay property taxes for a public school system that is going to end up bringing more public welfare uh and more property, because that's just more money appropriated from the people that's around. We could have then had with that money, taken our kids to charter schools, to private schools, could have taken, could it even, like my sister does, take tailor make the education to the child's needs specifically, like trade schools. You know, all these things are underfunded compared to public schools, but they have a higher performance rate. And um because when you go down down this rabbit hole, it's never gonna be enough. It's just last year, I believe, Florida passed the um the increase to the sales tax to go to to go to schools anyway for school maintenance. And now they wanna come in Jacksonville and raise up our property tax to pay for understaffed teachers. So I don't, I don't, I don't get it. Is that money enough? It's never gonna be enough. Because we socialize the economy, you're gonna have institutions that are quote unquote, too big to fail. And the people end up suffering for it because they're not going to get the market output that they're inputting for the results that they want. It's never gonna happen. And uh let's see, and that's about it. That's two, that's property taxes. Because if you pay the mortgage on your house and it's done, then that should be it. That's done. Why are we paying extra property taxes? Not only are you gonna be paying double tuitions for um for schools. You're paying double uh double the money for the home and this abstract tax that's floating in the air, you know? I mean, I paid for myself, so now that I got my own uh property, I have my own land, then it should be done. But the property tax is just a way, like I said, it's another form of theft. And uh yeah, number three, do you have a question?
Keep going.
Yeah, okay, I'm sorry. But um stop me anytime. And um there are many questions coming to concerns. But uh but yeah, I can, I can go all all over with the property tax because we always want the government to um help us in some way, shape or form, but it never happens in the way that we like. Because every time they wanna come and help us with something, it costs more money. It costs more money from everybody else that uh around us and wonder why we're not seeing the results that we want to see. The dollar has lost about 95% of its purchasing power since its inception. And once they took us off the gold standard in 1971 under the Richard Nixon administration. Then it turned the paper dollar, the green piece of paper, from a reliable uh piece of currency to just this fiat. This this Fugazi, this piece of paper that really means nothing because how it was is, okay, if you got a $20 bill or if you gotta, say you got 20 ounces of gold, right, or silver or whatever they like, and you go in, um you go to a bank, you submit that. They'll give you a $20 bill that says, all right, cool, you owe me, you know, or we owe you 20 ounces of gold or silver, whatever. You wanna get it, go and come back and pick it up. You can get it. Because nobody was gonna carry all that amounts of gold or silver on on themselves. It's dangerous and it was way too much and it's too dang heavy. And uh so they had these 100% uh reserved banks. What we go on now is a fractional reserve system, which pretty much means they don't even have to have all the money that you put in in the account. They can loan that money off to everybody else. And just like in the 2008 um recession, when the economy crashed, people wanted to get all their money out from the bank. They said, yeah, I'm sorry to break it to you, we won't even have all that money in the bank. We don't have it. So where the hell is it? You know, it's everywhere else but in your own pocket. And the yield, the yearly yield from these banks is not even worth it to even put so much money into the savings account. Plus, when you count for inflation, which the highest it's been in over 40 years, 8%, 8%? You gotta get 8% raise to even try to catch up. Even in the stock market, if it's a successful, successful stock portfolio, you get 10% return uh yield year after year. Now, but that's 10%. You know, now your stock returns year after year can barely even catch up with inflation to get you ahead. And um with the fact they're taking more money from our property taxes, putting more on gas taxes, it makes it much, much harder. And this is why crime is rising up. It's no, it's no coincidence that you ask the average candidate what they wanna do to keep the community safe, they say, for the amount of uh 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 growth in population that's in Jacksonville, we gotta put in just as many police, you know? And I'm like, well, I I remember when they did that before. That was in World War II in Nazi Germany. You know, when they had a police presence to match up along with the population that was around. And having more of a police presence in that way, shape and form is unnecessary. There was an article that I read on, I believe it was News for Jax, I forget the uh the news channel that it was. But they were gonna pass a law to go ahead and uh punish by way of the police people who play their music too loud, you know? You know, I'm pretty sure you've seen that, you know.
Yeah, that's a big topic. It's a big topic with the younger people. They're very mad about this.
Mm hmm. And it should be. Mm hmm. Because what it, what it says is we're gonna use the police state to intrude on private citizens, innocent citizens for more nonviolent crimes. You know, and it's and it's just ridiculous. And um yeah, you know, what's number, what's number, what's number three of the tenants that I'm running on? For uh candidacy in district eight. I went over the year of the gas tax. I went over the the property tax. And I'm going to with Jacksonville's uh debt. And the third one was corporate bailouts, but you pretty much know where I stand on corporate bailouts, which is the crony capitalism that I was talking about. There should be no reason big companies are still standing, even though nobody goes there. But they just still around because they're taking our tax money, knowing to keep it propped up. Ridiculous. It's like me coming to you saying, hey, I'm gonna take away $10,000 to this t-shirt shop my homeboy wanna set up. You wanna, you wanna put free Pookie on there? He wants to make 3,000 free Pookie t-shirts. You don't even wear t-shirts. You wear dashikis. So there'll be no reason for you to even be talking to this guy. But they're gonna take $10,000 away from you and whether it's success, it's uh successful or not, you don't get any residuals. You don't get any equity. You don't get any um and you don't get anything. But they took your money in order for him to get propped up, you know? And um so that's a corporate bailout.
So. You got more? You got more? You're good, you're good. Then we'll get to the next question. You're good. Keep going.
Okay, good, good, good. Awesome. And um, but, but all this makes sense, right? Everything is, everything is comprehensive, everything is, you know. All good? Okay, yeah. I won't be just talking. And um, the uh, the fourth one is Jacksonville's debt. Jacksonville is three billion dollars in debt, like I said before at the uh, the political forum. And um, church, but I wanna talk about a little bit more. And uh, we're three billion dollars in debt. We have three point seven billion dollars worth of assets that we have in the city, but we have six point seven billion dollars worth of debt that we have to pay. Jacksonville is top four in the nation for um it in debt as far as uh cities are, cities are concerned. Which pretty much explains why nothing happens in Jacksonville, why it's moving so slow, why our neighbors like, like junk, and you know, why the Jags don't win. I mean, I mean, it's, it's, it's all these things that's uh compounded together. But um, and uh, yeah. Everything that I've mentioned before goes into that debt, and it plunges us closer into impoverished conditions. And there's no amount of welfare, no amount of free stimulus money in any way, shape, and form is going to be getting us out of that because we had free money thrown at us. And what it did, it just rose up the inflation rate, it rose the taxation rate. It um, because the more money put into an economy, the more it kills the purchasing power of that dollar, okay? Um, in this past year, forty percent of the money that we see right now was just printed last year. It's brand new money, all this new money going around, which is a very, very bad thing. Because what's gonna happen is the Federal Reserve, the ones that print out our money supply, they're gonna have to raise up the interest rates a lot higher in order to pay back the debt that we've accrued for so long, for years and years and years. But all the way dating back to H W, H W Bush, and George W., and then Clinton, and oh, uh, uh, y'all cousin Obama, um, um, uh, uh, Trump. Um, and then now, now Joe Biden. You know, everyone says, man, Joe Biden's killing the economy, he's doing this, he's raising up the gas prices, and all this type of stuff. No, this was a group effort. This was a group effort. We can't just put it on one person because then we'll be intellectually dishonest with ourselves. We're gonna just wanna play the Republican and Democrat game, just blaming somebody who's in office at this present moment so we can have a face to be mad at. It was a group effort that's been happening for years and years and years. Jerome Powell is the present um Fed Chairman. Before that, you had Janet Yellen, then before that, you had Al Bernanke. They are a very partisan organization that works with the federal government, the, the federal uh government to bring in policies that will shape the way we do commerce. Um, Richard Nixon, he took us off the gold standard in nineteen seventy one for many reasons. One of them was he wanted to go and fund the Vietnam War. A lot of war is uh, has to be paid for, so he had to print out a lot of money to do it. Now, remember what I said earlier, the banking system at that time was based off of a fully reserved banking system. Meaning you couldn't have more money or more dollars or currency, you know, more than what, what there was, uh, more than there was gold or silver. You couldn't just do that, especially with gold. Because gold is what legitimizes the currency that we use, cause it's the only money system that we had at that time. That says, okay, you have this receipt, this IOU, this loan real quick, and then once, the once you get done, what you need to get done, I'm gonna have my precious metal back, and I'm gonna have my wealth back. This gold is a big store of wealth, uh, just like silver. And also a great industrial metal that has intrinsic value, and all this, so on and so. That's all of the conversation. But I'm just wanna, I'm just, I just wanna go into that place to tell you why having more of these receipts, having more of these IOUs is unnecessary. What we need to do is roll back the intrusion of the central authority that is the city council. And then we can have more room to breathe, more room to grow, more room to prosper, then we can make an enterprise off of the efforts that we want. And um, I want to, as a city councilman, I'm the one that's gonna help you do that. I'm the only one that tells you about this. You can't pay for a better candidate for District Eight. The ones that's gonna run in District Eight is gonna be a Democrat, it's gonna be a Democrat. Because it's a majority African American section of Jacksonville. It's very heavily populated with melanated people. And for, so ever since Lyndon B. Johnson, he said it back then, I'm gonna have these N-words voting Democrat for the next two hundred years. Because they know for the fact that if we vote more Democrat policies, we're gonna vote for more welfare, we're gonna vote for more help from them. Um, shout out to Charlie Crist. He um came to Jacksonville a little while ago. And uh, uh, cause the whole, the crux of the conversation was, uh, it was with other black men and women who had businesses, who had organizations, you know, who, who's, who was uh orchestrated by the, by the, by the uh Veterans Chamber of Commerce and the Black Chamber of Commerce. And we had a great conversation, great conversations about, about the uh, the amount of capital that we have in the city already based on these chambers of commerce, but no one is telling us about the money that's already just sitting there. And I'm sitting there thinking by myself, like, man, we got all this money taking away our tax dollars to essential authority. We could have then had the cut, the type of credit and the um gumption. Just go to the chambers of commerce where there already are, you know, I mean, get the, get this money so we can, we can have uh agencies loan money that who, who are, who are um, who are legit in the community, who's not gonna use it for a billionaire like Shahid Khan. You know, the only reason why our money's getting taken so bad is because you got Shahid Khan, the one that owns Jacksonville Jaguars, he owns all these projects going on. Well, the um, what is it, the Four Seasons Hotel, the doggone, everything else, all of it is taking millions, millions of dollars from people of Jacksonville without our permission. And it's, like I said, it's creating this generic economy. And um, a lot of money is floating around in there. And what I'm trying to do is say, hey, we're not uh some kind of tax base you can just appropriate money from. And we just, just become this pool of money you can draw from because the north side is, is decaying, it's decaying every day. And we all know this. And that is because that's why. And um, yeah, cause, and so, yeah. With this heavy uh population, the Democrats know they can just go in and just put a black face in there, they can just say anything about getting some type of welfare, and then people are gonna be like, aight, that's what's up, my man, you know. But I'm, 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 what I'm trying to say is, I'm gonna go the opposite direction. We need to have self-preservation, we need to have self-sufficiency, we need to have um much more sound, right economic ways of moving forward without all of that intrusion, without all of that, them strings attached. And that's what I'm gonna bring as a candidate, as a councilman in District Eight. You come to me, I speak to you. I'm uh, I'll give you the resources that you need in order to get what you need done, and then you can move on from there. You know, the Republicans wanna be your father, the Democrats wanna be your mama, libertarians, the party that I'm about, we want to let you be an adult. Pull yourself up by your own bootstraps, and I can tell you how to do it and exactly how to do it, so that when you succeed, all that success is owed to you. And that's what, that's what I'm saying. That's what I can bring into. And as far as Florida is concerned, the example that I'm gonna set with the city council in District Eight is gonna reverberate in throughout Jacksonville, especially when you have three libertarians in the city council. You have me, myself, you have for District Eight, you have Eric Parker running for District Two, you got uh Pastor uh Tub Rohrbach. He is running for at-large seat number five. And you have three libertarians inside of there. We go in there with a unison, with the mind of holding them accountable for the money they're taking from the people. And once we have that sway of public opinion in our side, then you'll see a lot more change happening because when you have three people saying, no, 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 whatever legislation that they're passing, instead of just saying uncontested, just yes, yes, yes. And we don't even know what they're passing. We don't know what they're doing. They're just saying yes, and we're, we don't, we don't have any input in the conversation. And that's the issue. They can say what they want to, but when they get in there, they let all of the petty stuff be in the forefront of the uh city council meetings, and then by the very end, when you gotta leave, go home, cause you gotta go to work. That's when the real, that's when the real stuff start happening. That's when they're like, aight, cool. Most of them are gone, so now we can get into the nitty gritty we wanna talk about. And without our input, they just go and pass whatever the hell they want to. And then we're, we're waking up, wondering why the two dollar raise that we got isn't enough. We're wondering, sitting, sitting around, wondering why rent is so high. Four hundred dollars from the previous tuition, not tuition, the previous leasing, uh leasing agreement to the new leasing agreement, how much that's being raised in rent? Four hundred dollars, that's too much. People come to Jacksonville to retire. People go to Jacksonville because the um the living expenses were inexpensive at one time. But now with the appropriation of our money and our capital, it's raised astronomically. In the CDC moratorium, I told them in the city council meeting back at that time, it was gonna create a housing crisis, and it did. How bad it was gonna get, I didn't foresee, but I knew just by basic fundamentals, that's what was gonna happen, and it did.
Thank you. So this is the, one more question. Why? Why? Just tell the voters why they should vote for you. Why you?
Because I'm not, I'm not here to sell you a drink. I'm not here, look, man, I'm not good for these flowery speeches. I'm not from, this ain't the sixties. I'm not trying to give you a, a PBS special filmed in black and white, wearing a bowtie, with some non-prescription glasses. You know what I'm saying? I mean, this, this, that's not what I'm here for. I'm here because I want to give the facts of what's happening in our city. I'm not here for these distractions. I'm not here to take down, I'm, I'm, I'm I'm gonna be very candid with you. I'm not, I'm not here to be taking down inanimate objects. I'm not here to change a bunch of school names, I'm not here to do any of that stuff. Cause I already told you how I feel about our tax money going to public schools anyway. You know, so yeah, what good is changing a name of a public school if I'm still paying double tuitions for either one, kids that ain't mine, or if I'm sending my kids to private school or charter school, or have, uh, uh, putting an education at home that's private? Why am I even paying for it to go there? It doesn't matter what you change it to, you're still, your money's still getting stole. That's what I'm saying. Your money's still getting stole. What does it matter what, what changes that? It's not the dead that I got a problem with. My beef is people that's in the living. They're the ones raising up my property taxes, they're the one raising up the gas tax, they're the ones that's impoverishing me right now. They're the ones putting me in economic slavery right now, today. I'm talking about something that happened two hundred years ago. That's cap, for me, that's cowardice. That's an easy fight. Because the ancestors have already closed that book. That is, their fate has already been decided. You can always say what you wanna say about people that can't speak up for themselves. You can say that all day. I wasn't there. But what I can attest to is what's happening in my lifetime right now. I know that right now, the people in the city council, they're leveraging my future, and, and the generation that come behind me, they're leveraging our future as a form of credit so they can secure their own retirement. That's my problem. That's my issue. That's what I'm talking about, you know? They, they're scared just as anybody else. They wanna, they, they see what's going on. They know that thirty three percent of Jacksonville's populate, oh, this is the populations in the, in the, in the entire union. They know that thirty three percent of elders from sixty, from age sixty to sixty-four, sixty-five have zero dollars in their retirement account. They know that. Everyone knows that. They know that the uh, the unfunded retiree obligations are just gonna be a little high. They know that pensions are, have gone by the wayside. They know the 401Ks ain't looking good as much like they used to. They know that um if they don't do something right now to secure themselves, they're gonna have to go back to being a greeter at Walmart. Or doggone, working at Goodwill or something. Have you noticed the, have you noticed the uh, the pop-up of elders working entry-level jobs? That's what I'm talking, that's what I'm talking about. Why am I going to Walmart? And I see people bringing out the fruit, and they like eighty-one, eighty-five, eighty-five years old, bringing out the fruit, stocking up the shelf. They ain't go home somewhere. But this is the issue that we're facing. You ain't got Dr. Fauci, you know Anthony Fauci, right?
Yes.
Yeah, I know, right? We know, yes, we know Fauci. And um, Brother Fauci, he is gonna be the highest-paid federal worker in the history of the United States after he retires. He's gonna get half a million dollars a year in pension for the rest of his life. And that's more of our money going to that. And a lot of these regula, I mean, as far as the medical industry is concerned, that's a whole nother topic that we can talk about because recently, I read about in News for Jax, uh Jacksonville Hospital had a shortage of uh, um materials that you needed for a CAT scan. I forget what specifically that it was, but it's on my page for you to look at it. And um, yeah, there was a shortage of medical supplies because of how high the taxation is to create these industries where we can fund. Uh, we, we pretty much manufacture them, but it's going everywhere else because the taxation is way too high. We're making bad decisions that's not yielding any results. And as a candidate, I'm the one that's gonna tell you how we can move from point A to point Z. And uh, yeah, and also not to mention, before we close out, I know we got about, it's forty-four, fifty-seven. I'm gonna talk about the roads. As far, as far as my uh, uh candidacy is concerned, throughout my candidacy, I've been fixing potholes, fixing the roads. Another thing that we've been paying our tax money, uh, tax money on, but it's not going, it's not going into, it's not getting done, especially in District Eight. They can say, whatever, yeah, let the roads do what they wanna do, you know, so. I've been, me and myself and Libertarian Party, we've been going around fixing the potholes, fixing the roads, you know, and I hope, when I wanna, uh, once I get into city council to have the initiative called Fix Jax Roads, where we go all around District Eight and end up fixing roads along with having recycllops come out picking the recycling. I mean, this is all stuff that's in the chamber. I just have to get in there. And then it's gonna make, it's gonna come to pass. I have everything ready to go, I just gotta get in there. And once I do, not when I, if I do, but when I do, that's exactly what's gonna happen. And it's, it's gonna free up the economy and enrich District Eight. And, and then we can make decisions as how to, how to move forward.
Thank you, thank you. And I do agree with those potholes. Yes, these roads are ridiculous. They are. A lot of people complain, a lot of people complain. Well, thank you. Thank you so much for joining us to this evening. Um, everybody, voters, remember. Um, shout out Ronald Tracy, is Robison or Robinson? Let me make sure, Robinson?
Either, either one, either one is just fine. As long as it's not Robinson, then we're good.
Okay, District Eight for City Council for two thousand and three, right? Yes.
That's right. When you go to the polls.
Thank you for joining us and sharing space with us. We really appreciate you coming on. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And um, I'm hoping to speak with you guys again anytime. Definitely invite me, I had a really good conversation with you. This was a lot of fun.
Thank you. I, I likewise, likewise. Thank you.
Thank you so much.